Okay, I'll call the meeting, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 20th, 2019. And we'll start with our pledge of allegiance and after that we'll have a moment of silence because our pastor or chaplain's not here today. So we'll have a moment of silence right after the pledge. So if everyone please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of America, with its strength and its courage.
Okay, our first order of business will be the request for public hearing to be held on June 30th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. in the historic courtroom of the Haywood County Historic Courthouse for consideration of amendments to the ambulance service regulations and ambulance operator franchise ordinance. And here to explain that is our attorney Frank Queen.
Mr. Chairman and members, the county has an ordinance that requires anyone who desires to operate an ambulance service in the county to get a franchise, have a franchise agreement with the county. This ordinance and provision is intended to act as an incentive for an ambulance service to establish itself and to be profitable within the county. The Haywood County Rescue Squad had operated that service for many years. The current plan for the EMS service of the county to undertake convalescent transport in the absence of the ability of the rescue squad to do so has caused us to look at the ordinance and to realize that we need to do one or two sentences of amendment to the ordinance to specifically make it clear that the county for itself, acting through its emergency medical service group, does not have to get a franchise agreement with itself. And it takes one sentence of amendment to that ordinance to do that and maybe a couple of other sentences in other places to just clarify that. And so because it's a change in the ordinance, we have to advertise for that change. The text of the amended ordinance will be available after the notice is first published in the paper and also published on the county's website. And at that time, the text of the amendment to the ordinance will also be available at the same time. And this is a call for the, you have to have a public hearing before you can amend an ordinance, it turns out.
Okay, so it's just kind of a formality then. And I will say, as I said last time, that Haywood County EMS has done 156 transports last month and the rescue squad didn't do any, so we really need to take care of this. Okay, our next order of business will be our public comment session. I don't have anyone to sign up. Is there anyone that would like to speak? If seen no one, I'll close the public comment portion. Our next order of business will be constituent concerns. And does anyone have any? Tommy?
I did have a call from a county resident saying, I guess in response to the newspaper article, that they can see the value of consolidating that recreational department back end of the municipalities county in Waynesville. And I said, because this person was pretty familiar with all that and they recommended to me that that was a good idea, so.
Maybe just along the same lines. I've actually had calls going both directions, so probably more on the consolidation side of it, but I have had contacts from both sides, so, and that's it.
Okay, and I will say I had given an interview on WOS today for recreation and I told them we hadn't made a decision yet, so I guess they're trying to get out front, but I'd really do anything newsworthy to tell him other than we were just still looking at it, so. Yeah, yeah. And then one other constituent concern, the Haywood County Solid Waste Department will be holding a spring household hazardous waste collection event on Sunday, May 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Materials Recovery Center located at 278 Recycle Road in Clyde. And during this event, Haywood County residents are encouraged to drop off household pollutants free of charge and a list of acceptable materials are listed on the county website. So once again, that'll be Sunday, May the 26th, and that's the day before Labor Day. It'll be this Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the MRF is what we call it, so. Okay, and I appreciate Solid Waste doing that. Okay, our next order of business will be our administrative agency reports and presentations. And we have with us today, there'll be a presentation of the 2020 U.S. Census Plan Partnership. And we have the partnership specialist, Augustin Velezquez, from the Atlanta Regional Census Center in the U.S. Census Bureau. So welcome, Mr. Velezquez.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here. As a 2020 census coming up next year, we are glad the Haywood County take the initiative to let us explain a little bit more, educate more the people of the county of Haywood about what the 2020 census is about. The goal of the census 2020 is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. The U.S. Constitution determines that every 10 years we do this since 1790, as required by the U.S. Constitution, Article 1, Section 2. The first one in 1790 counted 3.9 million inhabitants. And as the time goes now, we're going to have in the 2020 census, for the first time, an online count. So we're going forward in this presentation, we will explain a little bit more about. This map represents what every state has been gained or lost seats on Congress. And the 2010 census, North Carolina didn't gain any seats, it was not changed. The state of South Carolina gained one seat. As we see also, the state of Texas gained four seats based on their count. So it's very important for our state of North Carolina that we know exactly what we are expecting for the community. So why do we ask you to allocate resources for the 2020 census as a county? Because this is going to be very important for our political representation. Like I just showed in the previous map, it represents how many representatives we get for the next Congress. And also, we are going to work towards the impact and the economic distribution of the wealth. For the $675 billion budget of the government, these are distributed based on the people that we count during census. At George Washington University, did a study and provides how much every person in the county or in the state of North Carolina represents for the 2020 census. For the total budget of $16,000, $16 billion, sorry, every person will count $1,623. Those are the funds that we allocate from the federal government to grants and different activities as a social programs, health, education, roads, projects, et cetera. So it's very important, as a county knows these numbers and making sure they do the right preparation for the 2020 census. We have these response rates. In the state of North Carolina in 2000 was 69%, increased to 76% in 2020. Haywood County went from 62% to 76%. As the state governor, Roy Cooper, goal is to increase over 80% this time. He has created a State Complete Count Committee, that I will show a picture later. They have already, working since 2018, they have set up a budget of about $750,000 to promote the census in 2020. The way that this 2020 census is designed, everything starts with the geography, where we start counting, where we work with the planning and zoning departments from every county. This has been a work done in the last two years. And then we go to the phase of motivate people to respond. We conduct, you know, as a partnership specialist, we do a different type of agreement with the county managers, making sure they create these complete count committees, which is the core of the business of this 2020 census. We create these complete count committees so people start getting excited and motivated about what the 2020 census is all about and what it represents for the community. Then we count the population. The census is going to be going out middle of March, 2020. The official response starts in April 1st, but as soon as the people start getting the postcards and the mail, they will be able to start responding. Like I said, we have, for the first time, an online response. Also, people are going to be able to do it by telephone and also by mail. By then, we're going to have the results delivered to the president by the December 31st, 2020. One of the issues that we are running right now is about privacy and confidentiality. As a law, by the Title 13, we are held responsible for all this information that is used only for a statistical purpose. There is no personal information included in this census. So we can go up to five years in prison and/or a fine of $250,000. We protect that information and take precautions to make sure we collect, analyze, and deliver this data to disseminate that information to economical purpose and the political representation. It's very important to know that we never ask for social security numbers or never for donation or request any type of health in response of a political party. And we never request PIN codes, passwords, or any type of personal information. As you know, the Census Bureau collects data in a very timely basis. You know, we collect data for age, sex, marital status, education, house. All this information will lead to how businesses allocate their investments, how the industry goes from state to state, and how the employment and the government data is going to be used for economic purposes as well. Also, the census data is used whenever we have a natural disasters, as we have last year. We have the hurricane season, we were able to allocate people because of this information. And like I said before, these programs and services that we have with the federal budget allocated to every state is used for education, healthcare, transportation, social services, and emergency response. The new initiative, like I said, by phone or internet, this have shown that internet self-response is the most cost-effective way for the 2020 census. We are trying to eliminate paper and incorporate the use of handled data and collective device, as everybody knows now how people are in their mobile devices. So we have this timeline, like I said, we're going to start sending out the postcards with the barcode for every person to respond. It's going to be starting at March 12th. There's going to be four postcards sent out for the self-response. If people don't respond by that, and the system will determine, the enumerators go and knock doors. They're going to be knocking doors up to three times. After that, there's no way to count those people. Again, those are the dates, March 12th, 13th, 19th, and the 20th. And this is a very important fact, as we target populations hard to count. Children five years and under, veterans, people with disability, also people living in the rural areas. In the state of North Carolina in 2010, they did a poor job in counting the rural areas. So this is one of the things that we encourage, the complete count committees from every county, make sure they emphasize the work with these people. We have different geographic partnership programs that are available for the counties to work and encourage the partners to engage, such as LUCA, which is the local update of census addresses. Also, we use a very popular one, it is called ROM. Boundary Analysis Section Survey and the PSAP, Participant Statistical Area Programs. Again, all the people that are involved in this process with the planning and zoning department, they have to go under the same protocol, under Title 13. They are held responsible for any type of information that cannot be shared to any agency or any other federal agency. This is the State Complete Count Committee, as I mentioned before, created by the government of Roy Cooper, is led by the North Carolina Department of Administration, Michelle Sanders. They meet on a monthly basis. Like I said, they set up a budget to make sure everybody in the state of North Carolina is counted and aiming for 80% or more this time. One of the things that we encourage to the counties is create these complete count committees. The success of the census previously has been relied on these complete count committees. The state and local governments, businesses, community leaders, they are encouraged to participate and be part of this committee. Then they work together to implement the plan and focus on those areas that we mentioned before, the people under five years old and the rural areas. We should include every part of the following areas, government, education, media, minority organizations, community organizations, faith-based businesses, NGOs, et cetera. There is not only one complete count committee per site, it can be a different type of complete count committees. If anybody wants to take the initiative to do their own, it's more than welcome to do that because we want to get the message out. This is one of the programs that we encourage to the county managers to lead by appointing people with have the trust voices of the community. They know who they can work with. They know these people are going to be able to reach out to the community and make sure they participate in 2020 census. Most likely, they need to have someone who has a public relations officer, they can lead the social media, they can lead activities in the whole county, making sure the county at Haywood get more than 80% this time. The time to get organized is right now. We have, tomorrow, we have the Southwestern Commission Council of Government Training Workshop for people that are being appointed by the county managers. Make sure they go and they get trained for what the complete count committees and all the outreach programs are all about. Like I said, the time is now. We're going to be working in this side of the state. We are hiring a lot of people in the state of North Carolina. I have some flyers for people who are willing to apply. Previously in 2010, the process of hiring was a little bit tedious with a lot of paperwork to be done. Now it's online, takes about 15, 20 minutes. And the link is 2020census.gov/jobs. And the flyers got a lot of information for people to apply. This is the Response Outreach Area Mapper. Basically, the census got data by blocks and tracks. The tracks got more specific information about the response rate and what the population is all about and all the information that we need to increase participation. As a Census Bureau, we have partnership specialists. We're going to have office in Asheville that will be able to help you with any type of information or training. We also have office in Raleigh and Charlotte. We will provide all the personnel for information, assisting with the forming the complete count committees and participate in local events. We provide the material, we have flyers, we have data that is available, and also be able to create any type of campaign to reach out the community. If you have any questions, Mr. Chairman, please let me know. Like I said, it's very important, one of the things that when we do these presentations is ask the Board of Commissioners to set up a budget for next census. We have different experiences by other counties that spend about $15,000, $20,000 budget and they have a huge response. So it's a very important matter that people are willing to take the time and effort to create these complete count committees and make sure they do a very successful campaign. So thank you very much.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I have one question. I have a lot of people that I know that live here because we do attract a lot of retirees. They do not change and get a North Carolina driver's license because there's no income tax in the state of Florida. Where do they fit? Because they're living here year-round, visiting there, but we're having to provide 911, fire, and the everyday needs to these folks.
Right, so we have the same seasonal people in other areas. And what they need to do is they need to put the address where they live most of the year because that's where they get the benefits most of the time. So if there's people living, spending more time here than Florida, of course, they're going to put this address here because that's where the tax dollars are going to come to this county. So we have to encourage people, they live in the season time and most of the year in Haywood County, they need to put their address that is here.
So is that going to change anything as far as their tax status?
No.
So it wouldn't, if we could do something that would make them understand that they're not going to hurt themselves, but they will help this?
It's the situation with college students, like, you know, they want to have college students know where they at so they can set up the budget right. It's the same thing with, we're going to have a special account for people that are in prison, people that are homeless, people that are in college. So, but the seasonal people, yes, they have to put the address that they live the most of the year.
It relies on them to input the correct information.
And we need to be aware here, too, that the confidentiality rules of the Census Bureau mean that that data, where they report themselves as being most of the year, that none of that data is shareable by law outside of the statistical records of the Census Bureau. So it can't be shared with taxing authorities or anybody else. It's completely siloed inside the Census Bureau.
We need to figure out some way of, I don't know if it goes in the tax bills or something, but we need to figure out some way of emphasizing to these people to be accurate that it's not going to change anything.
Right.
As far as their status is concerned.
I think it's a really key thing for communicating to people because lots of folks, and I'm, of course, very well aware of lots of people who, to varying degrees of success, are manipulating their residents.
Correct.
For income tax purposes that don't necessarily correspond with where they're spending their time. And this issue is a huge issue for this county. Undercount of seasonal residents is a huge burden on this county. If we don't count these people correctly and if they don't report themselves correctly in the right place, they're going to be counted somewhere else. And we're providing the services year-round for them here. It's a big issue.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a very good question, Mark.
You said 72% was the response rate in 2010. The remainder, the 28%, you beating the bushes and driving around and knocking on doors to try to get these people that don't respond by mail voluntarily, that's where you come up to that number, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and you're looking for 80% this time.
Correct. So one of the things is campaigns of all the counties have been doing is, as you mentioned, put in their tax bill, participate in 2020 census because you count for the county of Haywood. And that way, you start reaching out everybody because everybody gets their bill. And the other situation is, as Mr. Queen says, yes, it's confidentiality and privacy is sealed for 72 years. Any type of personal information is going to be sealed for 72 years. Plus, this is used by a statistical purpose only, it cannot be shared with FBI, CIA, DHS, or ICE.
I noticed there was something in the news, national news, and I don't know if it ever got resolved, but are we going to actually know how many United States citizens we have at the end of 2020 or we're just going to know how many peoples in this country? Do you know that answer?
They have the citizenship question in court, so as right now, we don't have a response if yes or no going. And some of the flyers that we have, it is already included, but like I said, it's a appeal.
But it's in court?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to the Supreme Court.
So just common sense, you'd think we'd like to know how many United States citizens we have in our country. I mean, just personal opinion, but spend that much money on a census, kind of behooves us to know how many people we've got here that are citizens.
It's also for the voting rights as well, so that they know how many people are really voting, too. That's kind of the behind the citizenship question is how many people are really able to vote.
Hey Greg, our tax collector's here, and can we put a notice in the, can we mail out the tax bills, just that, I think just something simple to say that, you know, if you live in Haywood County, you know, count, you know, put it in your, you know, when you do the census, fill out the form, make sure you fill that out. Greg was just saying that Haywood Alerts and some other organizations are wanting us to put something in there. So when you get your tax bill this year, people out there watching on TV, make sure you read everything in there because there's some good information in there that would really help our community out. Do you have anything, Brian?
Do you know right off the top of your head, Mr. Velezquez, what the number of, the amount of money that we're going to spend nationwide conducting this census?
That number I don't have. I know the census got different regional offices. We are part of the Atlanta Regional Office, and we only have budget for marketing purpose, for recruiting purposes, because we are in the need of more than 5,000 people in the state of North Carolina, and they are looking to hire about 500,000 jobs across the state. So that's the money that is going to be able to recruit the people, that's the main purpose. We rely on the marketing campaigns and everything with the complete count committee so they can be partnered with us and do different activities to outreach the community because that's how we're going to be able to reach through the trust voices of the community. If they know how they get to their own community, that's what we need to be focusing in.
Do you have any idea on how much that it pays for the census worker?
In the state of North Carolina, the rates for the jobs are between $1,250 and $20.50. That's the rate, based on the area that they're at.
Right, okay. And how long does that go?
There's a temporary jobs, they can apply right now. Like I said, the link is 2020census.gov/jobs. And as soon as they fill that out, they're going to have just 15, 20 minutes to do a test and they be put in a pool of candidates, they can be pulling out based on the region they are.
Okay.
So it depends on the area they are, they get the pay between $1,200 and $20.50.
Okay. And it lasts, how long does it last for, a year?
It lasts, it can last up to June 2020.
June 20, okay.
So if they, more than a year probably for now.
Okay, that's good for people to know. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, we appreciate you coming and sharing with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, our next administrative agency report presentation is the VAIA Health Physical Monitoring Report for the quarter ending March 31st, 2019. We have our Finance Director, Julie Davis.
Good afternoon. I have the March report for you in the agenda. It's required by statute that I presented to you at a public meeting. And if you'll flip to the first page, you'll notice that the revenue's down about midway down the page. Through March 31st, 2019, $317,87,401. And a little bit farther down, the total expenditures through March are $312,979,781 for a total net income of $4,107,620. And there's quite a bit of additional information in here where they talk about their fund balance and some of the restrictions they have on that fund balance. They've been including that the past few quarters.
Anybody have any questions for that? Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, the next item is our discussion adjustment to the agenda, and I, I don't have any, does anyone have anything? Okay. Okay, now we'll do our consent agenda, and the, uh, the, number one is the request approval of the May sixth, twenty nineteen regular meeting minutes, and we appreciate Candy for all the work she does on that, 'cause I know it's hard to make sure she gets that just right, so. The second item is the request approval of budget amendments, and it's from the General Fund, Health and Human Services, Crisis Intervention. This is seventy-one thousand dollars, and this is a reduction in funds from the Energy Assistant Program. And it, what, what happened is, we didn't use it, and so they're asking us to give it back, so that other counties can use it. Uh, it'll help their budget, so that's what that's about. The capital, uh, the next item is the Capital Project Fund, and it's HCC, Haywood Community College, for eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars to transfer, for, to transfer the balance of proceeds from the public training facility installment loan that must be used to cover the debt service for the project. And this money has to be used for debt service. It's the money that's left over from the building, and so we're just wanting to close that account out, so. And Julie will apply that to the debt. And the third, uh, item is request approval for the Fines Creek Community Associations to sublet a portion of the county leased property located at one ninety Fines Creek Road, Clyde, North Carolina, to Doyle and Sheila Justice for a coffee house in the amount of one hundred dollars monthly. And this is basically, the community association is subleasing to, at the, uh, it's, and it's really a library there, so they're gonna try to, uh, have a coffee shop in Fines Creek, so maybe that'll, maybe that'll be a metropolis before long. So that's what that is, so. Okay, does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? Here and then, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, mark me in the motions, or a second?
Second.
Okay, another discussion. All those in favor designate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we move on to our regular agenda, and the first item of business is the request approval for the County Manager to review and execute the contract between Haywood County and Tanner Evaluation Services for the twenty twenty-one revaluation. And we have our Tax Administrator Stephanie Parkins and Tax Assessor Judy Hickman.
Mr. Chairman.
And, and then, I'm sorry. And then Brian.
The, uh, this, this item, uh, number one and number two, uh, the budget change associated with it, uh, will execute the contracts that we talked with, uh, Mr. Tanner and, uh, Mr. McCarthy at the, the work session to do the revale over the next three years. Uh, this year, we're, have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available out of contingency to get the work started. And in the twenty budget, we have more funds, and then in the twenty-one budget, we will, uh, have an additional, uh, funding in there to cover the cost over a three-year cycle. I don't know if there are any questions that, that Mr. Tanner didn't answer at the work session, but this just gives me the authority to execute the documents.
Okay, so I need a vote on that, to approve it, or just a budget amendment? Both? Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to request approval for the County Manager to review and execute the contract between Haywood County and Tanner Evaluation Services for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one revaluation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, then the next is to request approval of the budget amendment from General Fund Contingency for the Tax Assessor's Office in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover the current year cost of the revaluation project contract. And Julie Davis, our Finance Director.
And, and that's simply what this is. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
The, we, um, had two hundred and eleven thousand in contingency, we're hitting that for a hundred and fifty thousand. We have a couple more items that we're gonna be hitting contingency for this evening, but this is gonna, um, bring it down a little bit, but we're, we're taking this money from contingency and putting into the Tax Assessor's budget, so they can pay the current year portion of this contract.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we recruit, that we approve the budget amendment from the General Fund Contingency for the Tax Assessor's Office in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand to cover the current year cost of the revaluation project contract.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. And I, I did wanna make a point that the contingency, uh, when it started out the year, we, we've not, I mean, we still have contingency left, and we still have about a month and a half left in our budget year, so that's real good that we had that much money left.
It is good, it really is.
Yeah, I appreciate Julie keeping an eye on all that, so. Okay, okay, next, we have, let's see, we did vote, right? Okay. Next, we have a request approval of the twenty, April twenty nineteen refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. We have our Tax Assessor Judy Hickman.
Good evening. I'm requesting approval of the April two thousand nineteen refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. There were thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for motor vehicle refunds. Releases, um, were a total of eighty-eight thousand, seven forty-two zero six. And eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents of that, um, came from a consent order from the Property Tax Commission for the DLP Appeal. Um, we had in discoveries, there were two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-three cents, and then, um, land use was four thousand, sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents.
Does anybody have any questions of Julie? Okay. Tommy, you look like you're engrossed. You have any questions?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries for April twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the request approval of the April twenty nineteen tax collections, updates, and refunds, and we have our Tax Collector Greg West. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, a report on, uh, two thousand eighteen April's collection percentage. We have collected ninety-six point forty-seven percent. That is for an amount of thirty-eight million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. We have a, still a balance due of one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-two cents. We had a decent, uh, month in April, I believe we collected over six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in April, uh, which was around four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, of that was two thousand eighteen taxes. We collected a hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, for two thousand seventeen taxes, and we also had a hundred and ten thousand in prepayments. So we're having a lot of people make prepayments now for two thousand nineteen, which is refreshing, that they are being proactive.
Okay, yeah.
We have a administration refund, there was one thousand, two hundred and five dollars, uh, for the month of April.
You know, what, what was that again? You had a?
The adminis, administrative refund, refund, this comes out of the Assessor's Office.
Oh, okay.
There was one thousand, two hundred and five dollars, uh, that was, uh, a couple of landfill fees that, uh, people didn't, were not, did not, should not have paid, and then there were a couple of exemptions that had been dropped off of an account because of split of property, and then it was re-added back on, on that. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Greg? I'll just note that the collection rate's the highest it's ever been, so.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're working on it. Main thing is, we just ask for people, you know, if we send out some notices and stuff, please contact the office, so we can, uh, work something out, uh, if you wanna, we've got a lot of people making payment plans, uh, and, and doing that, so there's, you know, just communicate with the office, please, and, uh, we can look for win-win.
Yeah, and if you say you're gonna do it, do it, right?
Pardon?
If you say you're gonna do it, do it.
That's right, yes.
Yeah.
Communication's a
Communication, very important.
Yeah.
And, uh, we are, again, mentioning the census stuff, I'm sure we can work something out on that, to get something in the bill. Haywood Alerts is, is wanting something on there that, uh, maybe we can combine their little postcard with something with a census on a one-page sheet, a paper, you know, that fits in the bill. Should be something that could be very doable.
What was the other thing you said?
Haywood Alerts and also elections.
Elections, that was it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, 'cause elections will be coming up, so I guess people need to be informed about that.
Yeah, Robbie, uh, Mr. Emmon is wanting to get people's attention, he needs volunteers, you know, he needs some people to help work.
Right, yeah.
So.
Okay, yeah, it's always tough during the election to get enough people to work
Exactly.
'Cause you gotta have so many from each party, I think, and
Yes.
and everything, so it's always tough. Okay. Okay, does anybody have any other questions for Greg? Okay, okay, I'll entertain a motion, we, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the twenty nineteen tax collections, updates, and refunds.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the request approval of a budget amendment from the General Fund for JCPC, the HITES program, for twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars to reflect the additional state revenue allocated to the program of nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for the purchase of a vehicle, as well as a, the twenty percent county match of four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars from the General Fund Contingency. We have our Finance Director Julie Davis and HITES Executive Director, uh, Marcus Metcalf, is he? Thank you. Go ahead, Julie.
The, uh, this is another piece that's coming from contingency. The, um, the HITES program received a grant that goes to eighty percent of the vehicle that they would like to purchase, and they've asked that the county commissioners fund the twenty percent match for their grant. So, um, if we, if we want to do that, to get up to the twenty-four thousand, two hundred that they need for the vehicle, then we'll need to take four thousand, eight hundred and forty from contingency to, uh, cover that match. The JCPC programs typically require a twenty percent match, so this is nothing unusual. And if you wanna hear about the program, Marcus is here and can tell you more about the program than I certainly could.
Does anybody have any questions for Marcus? Okay. Okay, here, here and then, I'll, I'll, uh, request a motion to approve the budget amendment, uh, from the General Fund of twenty-four thousand, two hundred to reflect the additional rate, state revenue allocated to the program, which is nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for the purchase of a vehicle, as well as the twenty percent county match of forty-eight, forty for the, from the General Fund Contingency. So I'll ask for
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mark, Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor designate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
And Julie's still up, uh, we have a request approval of the budget amendment from the General Fund, Public Safety Detention, for fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars from the General Fund Contingency to cover the increased houses, cost of housing and feeding inmates through June thirtieth. And like I said, we're still, we, we've, we're hitting a contingency three times, but there's money in there.
We're hitting contingency tonight, we haven't hit it for a, a number of, um, board meetings. But this, the Sheriff's Office, um, contacted me to let me know that their inmate meals were getting ready to go over budget, and they need, they had additional inmates that they're housing, so they have to feed them. So, um, they, they needed quite a bit more money, and we were able to find through line item transfers, some of the money, I think is close to about thirty-six thousand that they needed to get through June, but, um, we can only move so much money in the detention budget, so we're taking this fifteen thousand, eight hundred from contingency to cover these inmate meals. And after we take this final amount, we're gonna have forty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven still remaining in contingency to get us through June thirtieth.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Julie? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the budget amendment from the General Fund for Public Safety Detention for fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars from the General Fund Contingency.
Make a motion to do that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just a comment. Mr. Chairman, I know that a recent visit up there, I realize those inmates have to have so many calories a day, so that's part of the cost here's.
Right, okay. Yeah, we're mandated by the state, probably even the federal, to, to do certain things. I know we have to do the healthcare, that always kinda burns me a little, but, anyway, that's what they say we have to do, so. Okay, so, I see, did Mark made a motion?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, the next item is to request approval of upset bid and offer to purchase resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property, and these are parcels eighty-seven thirteen fifty-one, ninety-nine oh two, and eighty-seven thirteen fifty-one seventy-eight forty-eight. We have our County Manager, Brent Morehead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think these are the last two parcels of property that we have, uh, that are through the upset bid process. So parcel ending nine nine zero two, uh, has an assessed value of thirty-one thousand, two hundred. Parcel seven eight four seven has an assessed value of thirteen thousand, eight hundred. Uh, we first received an initial purchase, uh, amount of a thousand dollars back in January, uh, we brought that to the board, January twenty-second, it was from coast to coast, that started the upset bid process. We had a, a total of eleven upset bids, but only by two bidders. So the, the, the parcel, actually, or both parcels sold for five thousand dollars, uh, and includes, or in addition, it has a one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents in, in legal advertising. Previously, we had incurred four thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents in legal fees, so we, we actually are, are making about, uh, four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents on this, uh, this package of property.
Okay. So you didn't have thousands of people upset to bid, like we
Two.
like we were told there was, right? Just wanna make sure that people understand. Okay, so can I have a, I'll entertain a motion to approve the upset bid and offer to purchase, uh, resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property, parcels eighty-seven thirteen fifty-one, ninety-nine oh two, eighty-seven thirteen fifty-one seventy-eight forty-seven.
So moved.
Okay, just second. Dang it, okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Uh, so that concludes about a sixteen or seventeen-year process on some of those lots.
Now we get some tax money, right?
Yeah.
That's right. See, Tracy, I didn't make you come up tonight.
I think you found some reason to get her up here. She's done such a good job last time.
She's sitting there directly behind, you know, where I can't see her back there, so. Okay, well, thank y'all for that, so that's, uh, we can get those county, uh, properties back on, in, in, into the tax base. And I appreciate coast to coast, you know, doing, starting this process, because, uh,
They've still been sitting there.
Yeah, they would have, yeah. Do we have any others that you know of? Is there? Tracy, Tracy says yes, she's not coming up and tell us, but
Yeah, get her up here.
Tell us how many.
But, so if anybody's interested, I know occasionally I have someone contact me that they know about one, and I usually refer them to Tracy Wells, our, uh, paralegal, and she can, um, tell them where, where it is. I know there's a, a piece of property in, on Soco Mountain that's getting ready to be, uh, on the, on the market, so, um, anyway, if you're interested, just call the County Manager's office, and we can put you in touch with someone if you're interested in the property.
Tracy, do you know how many roughly? One, okay.
Oh, just one, okay. Is that the Boyd? McClure? Oh, that's right, yeah. Some of them are complicated, so, yeah. To get good legal title, we, we, we have to go through, jump through some hoops also, so. Okay, our next, uh, item of business is to, is the presentation of the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, and request for a public hearing to be held on May twenty-third, twenty nineteen, at five thirty PM, in the historic courtroom of the Haywood County Historic Courthouse, for the proposed fiscal year of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And we have our County Manager, Brent Morehead, here to present, and I do, I do wanna say that this is, uh, the call for the public hearing to be held, uh, on Thursday night, May twenty-third, at five thirty, right here. 23rd at 5:30, right here. So go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have a budget document that's bound in, in front of you. Proud to present it and see that it's balanced and it's in accordance with the general statutes, and it preserves the current tax rate at 58.5 cents, and it meets most of the needs of our departments, but not all of them certainly. I'd like to take just a few minutes and thank the department heads and our elected officials for making this budget process not easy, but it wasn't extremely difficult, working with the school board and Dr. Nolte and his staff, as well as Dr. Parker and her staff has, has been really, really nice, good lines of communication, I think that has made a better product. Also, want to thank Julie for her expertise and advice through the whole process. I've relied on her greatly. And intern Will has been with us, except for one week when he lost his mind with post-it notes. He's been a huge help, and the book that you have in front of you is largely Will's work. He's, he's done a lot of effort, so appreciate that. So let's just jump in here and talk about the budget. So this graph you saw a couple of weeks ago, this is our property tax graph. We expect an increase of $822,575. It's made up of really two property tax accounts or, or types, real, personal, and utility, increasing $350,821, and our vehicle tax, $471,754. We had a slight drop in our collection rate that we have to use to calculate our property tax revenues, but as Julie mentioned earlier, and Greg recently, it looks like we're on track to, to increase that rate. So next year, when I'm giving this presentation, I hope to have better news. The, the rate dropped from 97.47% to 97.41. So I'm, I'm hoping that we get some of that back, and it looks like we will. The next one is sales tax, an increase of $727,526, represents a 4.73% increase. Sales tax is doing really good. The, the economy here is, is booming, and I think while it's pushing our comfort level on percent increases, I, I think we're, we're plenty safe on that. All other revenue, this is a catch-all, because the other two revenues are, are so much of our, our total general fund. This is an increase of $1.4 million over last year. There's, the two drivers of it, if you will, are the EMS convalescent revenues. We added those after you took action on May 6th. We've got $718,000 in for convalescent revenue next year. And EMS billing, we were able to renegotiate the rate we pay for our collection services, and we, we got an increase from that, as well as we're partnering with the hospital on the health data exchange. It should allow us to have better data, which allows us to bill really insurance easier, so we have an increase of $495,000 just from those two. Our investment earnings are up $290,000, and that's because interest rates are up, and so having some cash in the bank allows us to, to generate more interest. After we met on the 6th, we got some really good news. The, the friends of the Haywood County Animal Shelter said that they are going to give us $200,000 next year. We're going to apply that to our debt on the animal services building, and that, that was big as far as changing the number from when we talked a couple of weeks ago. Not all of our revenues are increasing. We do have a decrease of about $305,000 overall, and it's under that category restricted intergovernmental. Those are really the fees that we receive from the state and federal government. Most of them are at DHHS, namely foster care payments, Medicaid transportation, and clinical fee revenues that we receive at the health department. Overall, our revenues controlling for fund balance are up $3,014,800, or a 3.3, a 3.73% increase. Moving over to expenditures, total budget is up $4.8 million. I don't know if you can see this on your screen clearly. The 4.8 million increase represents an increase of 5.87% in the general fund. If you notice, public safety is the largest at 1.8 million, health and human services at 1,054,000, and then education at 881,000. In these numbers, and I, and I've talked to you at length about the, the health plan costs, so if we actually just pull out what our health insurance or health plan cost increases are, the graph looks noticeably different. Education becomes the, the top one at 881,000, public safety then at 863,000. Our total general fund budget is only going to increase $2,054,000 when we control for the health plan. So I think this shows the magnitude of what we're, we're up against, and how it has been the driver of this budget. $2,054,000 represents a 2.70% increase. So we, we've got to fix that, and, and we'll spend some time in just a few minutes talking about it. Salaries and benefits are up 4.53 million of the 4.8 million increase. And here it is, the health plan costs 2.7, almost 2.8 million dollars over the last couple of years. In, in fiscal year 18, the health plan was about a million dollars underfunded. In 19, we took action on the 6th to move 1.3 million. We've been putting more money towards the plan, and, but our claims are up. The, the, the amount of money we're putting in there is not keeping up with the claims. So 2.8 is, is a huge number. I've never seen anything like it in, in one year. But we have a plan. In July, we're going to bid out the plan to make sure that we have the right benefits in place for the county. But you all are going to have to be faced with some tough decisions. We're going to bring back part of that as decisions on what we're going to do with retiree benefits for new hires. I'm not talking about people that are currently in our workforce, but those that start after the first of the calendar year, after the end of this year. We might need to limit which plans are available. Right now, we have the HSA and the PPO, right? We may have to limit the new employees to only the HSA plan. And most importantly, and, and I think Mark Browder at the work session talked about it, that we need to develop some wellness initiatives that are proven to work. How can we get our employees healthier? It, it makes their quality of life better, but it also saves us money. So we really have to tackle those in the upcoming budget. New positions, there were over 14 positions requested. This budget includes funding 10.25. We also have mandated increases in the retirement system. The state changed the rate that employer has to pay, and I think that's about $340,000 in that change. This budget also includes the structured market increases. We talked about that at the work session, and I'll highlight those again. The EMS convalescent positions that were added at the last meeting, we have those six positions in, and also not related to the general fund, but in the solid waste fund, we have two solid waste scale clerk positions. Those will help ensure accuracy at, at the, the MRF. Over $800,000 in new positions was requested, and so to, to go over those, it's, that are in the budget, is the halftime CMA. That's for the wellness clinic. Last year, we had over 2,400 patients at our clinic, at an average of $106.41 per visit. Comparatively, an urgent care visit is about $320, an ER visit's about $1,500, and just a primary care visit is $142. Think the CMA position will expand our services, the number of patients we can see, which will help bring down our claims costs. The software support specialist in IT is, is something that I think IT really desperately needs. We, we only have one person in that role, so if something happens, we don't have a backup. Everyone relies more and more on software to do their job, so this gives us some backup and ability to keep the services going if something were to happen to our software person. We have several positions for the sheriff's office, a patrol lieutenant. Currently, the night shift, they do not have an officer position on duty. This would provide that a night shift officer, commissioned officer is, is available, and that will be the command staff during the evening hours. The property and evidence room is currently staffed with a three-quarter time position. I'm suggesting that we raise that to a full-time. Last year, they had over 700 cases, and the workload's increasing, so increasing that from three-quarters to full-time is warranted. Also, it's, it's a detention center sergeant position. Currently, they have four squads in the detention officer, in detention center. Three are staffed or are supervised by sergeant. This would make that, sure that all four were supervised by sergeant-level position. Environmental health will receive a specialist position. They'll focus on well and septic permits, as well as restaurant inspections. You, you probably know, we're required by law to inspect every restaurant in, in the county every, once a year. Growing county, growing number of restaurants, it's harder and harder to, to meet that standard. This position, make sure that we can keep up with state mandate. Social services, recommend three different positions there, or three positions. Income maintenance specialist will really work on eligibility, and then a social work three position that will be designated for the APS, or Adult Protective Service area. Our calls, we, we talked at the planning session back in the winter, the, the number of calls for, for adult protective services is just skyrocketing, and we need to be able to add this position to get our workloads more manageable. Cooperative extension has a need for a full-time FCS agent here in the county. For the last few years, we've shared this with Macon County. If we bring that in-house, it's a cost this year of about $13,000, because the state will, will chip in more money to us, so we don't have to fear the, feel the full brunt of the cost of that. And what that does is allow cooperative extension to provide more services to our folks here in the county. We will, as with all positions, we're not going to fill those until after the first of the year. Originally, we tried to, to hire them in October, but in order to get that fund balance number down, we've, we've delayed these until the, the end of the, of, of the calendar year. But that will give time to Macon County to transition, because we didn't want to just flip the switch and they not have the FCS worker there as well. We do have the funds in for the, the six positions for convalescent, and I did mention the, the scale worker positions. This budget includes a 2% cost of living adjustment for all employees the first full pay period in July. Then in January, or the first full pay period in January, we'll implement structured or differential market adjustments. The three levels would be under $40,000, base pay will receive a 5% increase, more than $40,000, but less than $60,000 will receive a 3% increase, and if you make over $60,000 base pay, you will receive a 1.5% increase. I want to make sure that everyone knows this no way changes the requirement that supervisors do evaluations. We're off from market, and I think getting to market's a, a main concern, so we can keep and, we can recruit and retain people, but we still need to reward our higher-performing employees at a higher rate. So we're going to continue to do evaluations, even though we're not doing merit for this year, because in the, the next year, once we get to market, we will bring back evaluations to merit base pay. So the 5% market adjustment receives, affects about 308 positions. 101 of the 308 actually have a base pay of under $30,000. This, this group is about 62% of all of our positions, and 85, 80% of those getting this adjustment are either in public safety or human services. The data that we have shows that these are the farthest off from market, and these are the ones that we have a harder time recruiting and retaining. So I think this, this is the rational approach to make for that group. The 3% adjustment will affect 146 positions, or about 29% of our total positions. 76% of the, the folks in this 3% group work in public safety or human services. Of the 102, or of the 146 that this impacts, 102 positions have a base salary under $50,000. The last group are, are most highly compensated. These are about 9% of our total population of employees. 67% are in public safety or human services. Like, or the, for the current year, we did a 2% COLA, 1% merit, and increased our 401K contribution. So doing a 2% cost of living for this group and a 1.5% market adjustment is really in line what we, what, with what we did for the current year. It's, it's half percent. It's actually probably less than that when you factor in the 401K change. Overall, for current year, our compensation increased $1.1 million. So comparative, we have 1.25 million in for next year's budget to fund the differential increases, so an increase of 105,000. We really hope this reduces the turnover and, you know, helps those that need it the most, those at the, under 30, right? 101 of our employees are making under $30,000, and this really helps lift their, their base up. The next is our operating increases. It's, it's up a million 46. It, it actually represents a 2.85% increase. But inside that million 46 are the funds that we give the schools and the college. And so you can see, I'll just start over. We're increasing the college from 360 to 417 on the capital side, and they're operating from 2.7 to 2.9. Now, you may remember, the first numbers we talked about with, with the college was, was about $493,000, and this represents an increase of $178,000. What was driving the college's request was the janitorial services. They had two rounds of bids, and the bids came in about level. So we're able to, to shave off about $300,000 and meet the needs on the, of the college and the other places. So that was, that was some really good news that we got late last week, that, that we were able to, to save those money. On the school side, we're able to increase the capital funding from 750 to 900,000, and on the operating side, this is an increase from 15,900 to 16,400, an increase of $496,000. On the county side, we have funds in for the revow, just talked about it. The TDA increases 187,000. While it's on our general fund side, we have it offset by revenue. Mountain projects is transportation funds, it's a carryover of 141,000. I mentioned the cooperative extension position under the, the employees, because the way we pay the state, this actually is an increase on the operating side, not salaries and benefits side. And we have in the human resources budget, $50,000 to do a classification study. It's been at least 10 years since we've done a classification study. I talked with Kathy about this, and she said it may have been as far back as 1999. So we need, we need to actually look at how we have our own employees classified internally as well as externally, to see where we are in market for honest-to-goodness blueprint on how to approach our employee compensation program. Sorry. Not all of our operating, our departments have an increase. Social services, their operating is down 319,000. Elections is down 116,500. EMS has a decrease of 62,938, and IT is down 51,000. So we've made cuts. Now, I want everyone to believe that everybody got everything they wanted. We, we've actually had some reductions, and the, the budget as it's presented is about a million eight less than what was requested. Let's talk about capital, is a decrease of 856,000. But the decrease really, part of it's associated with how we've tried to handle voting machines in the last couple of years. We had funds in fiscal year 18 and the current year to buy replacement equipment, but because the state hasn't certified equipment, we haven't bought it. So it doesn't look like. So it doesn't look like they're going to have new equipment certified for this upcoming year. So there's not really much use in tying up eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's going into the decrease in capital. We are going to buy seventeen vehicles, just over a million one. Ten for the sheriff, three for EMS. One of those is the new convalescent ambulance, a replacement ambulance, and then a remount. Two trucks for environmental health, an SUV for HHSA, and a truck for the fire marshal. Other capital items is a body scanner for the Sheriff's Office. The total cost is about a hundred ninety thousand dollars. The sheriff's got some funds from drug forfeiture, as well as the Ross Trust. So he's going to help us get the costs down, and the county funds will be a hundred sixty-five thousand. We have some money in for paving at the Paragon facility. Some of our other buildings are in desperate needs of roofs, and we are going to do some light conversions to save money with LEDs, things like that. So we have two hundred sixty thousand budgeted there. We have replacement equipment needed in IT. Either it's at the end of its useful life, or that equipment's no longer supported by the vendor. So this would be county-wide, two hundred forty-two thousand. And then it's under capital, but it's actually a debt service item. We have a hundred sixty-one thousand budgeted for debt payments on the radio tower project. I think total cost's about a million three. So we're going to finance that over the next few years because it's such a big expenditure. I think this is something that has been needed for many years, and this will fix, or help fix, radio communications for public safety folks. So we were able to do all of this and use about three point six million in fund balance. It was tough getting there, but I think you have to really be cautious of using fund balance to fund recurring costs. But we're in financially very good shape. I think that three point six is a high watermark. By the time we implement some changes to the health plan, that we won't use all of the three six that's planned. Now, something may blow up on July second that makes that statement not accurate, but it's our commitment that we will try to fix the health plan and really lower the cost so we don't actually use all of the fund balance appropriated. What's next? We have the public hearing on Thursday night, and then at the June third meeting, we can consider adoption of the budget. That's my presentation, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Brian? I was at a, we were at a, I guess it was a fundraiser around Christmas, but the state treasurer was there for the state of North Carolina. I forget his name, but anyway, he was there, and he was saying that healthcare costs for the state was something that he was very concerned about. Do y'all remember that? I mean, Brandon and Tommy was at that meeting, and he was real concerned about healthcare costs, so, and the state being able to afford the plan that they had. So I guess it's something that's happening all over. I've been a commissioner for, this is my fifteenth year, and I've not seen this kind of a health issue. I don't think we have, have we, Julie, with the health program? I know we've instituted things like the Wellness Clinic, things like that, but it's just, I guess we're going to have to look a little deeper and make some changes.
And you're right, we're not in this alone. Even our neighbors here in western North Carolina have experienced it, but others are having no growth or even a decline. So there are glimmers of hope out there that we can make some of these changes, that we don't have to see the growth. And we've had some really good conversations over the last couple of months with our hospital. They're looking at extending the same rates through to Crescent as they give Blue Cross. And so there are things that we're working on, and the hospital has said that they will be glad to partner with us to do a health risk assessment for our employees. And I think, again, as bad as it is, I think we can do better, and I think there's a lot of people committed to it. So I feel good about it, as bad a news as it is.
We're also getting some help, I think, from the hospital on the convalescent transports as well, is that correct?
That's correct, and I think Greg actually has sent them the proposed contract that got their input. And the partnership with the hospital is very strong, and I think, you know, it's one that we value and will value for many more years.
As well, you know, I'd like to see us reach out to the foundation, maybe on some help on the vehicle as well. I don't know if we've done that yet or not, but...
I'd just like to say that I appreciate Brian, you and Julie working on this as hard as you have, and all the department heads. Brian's been very good about keeping us informed, and, you know, I don't like to get those messages. They call me ASAP, you know, we got bad news. I don't, I didn't like that day, but you have these unexpected things come in, and you kind of juggled everything around, and, you know, you softened the blow a little bit for us. But I appreciate all the hard work y'all have done on this.
So what you're saying is you can't get us a penny that we was looking for on the tax rate? Maybe next year, right? Maybe next year.
On that catastrophic healthcare carrier, you mentioned July, you're going to rebid that. What's the hopes? I mean, do you have any weather forecast out there, like a hundred percent chance of rain, or partly cloudy, or how's it looking?
I hope it looks better. That's kind of vague on purpose because there's so many moving parts. And part of the battle we're going to have is that we're self-insured, and they're going to, we have good data on our claims. So people that are going to look at the bid are going to look at, you know, here's your population. And they, you know, insurance companies don't lose money. That's, so it's a tough road ahead of us.
Just another comment, I'd like to say thank you as well for the compensation help that we're giving our employees. You know, I think that'll go a long way and possibly save us money, as you mentioned earlier, which is costly when you have turnover and stuff. So I think the employees will appreciate the efforts there, so.
But that was your all's marching orders at the planning session, was to help those at the bottom of the pay plan. So this is, that's what we have tried to do.
Would increasing the clinic drive more people to using that? To keep from having to pay doctor's visits, ER visits, urgent care visits? Is that something that might help in the long run?
That's what we're hoping with that additional CMA position at the clinic, is that if we can expand the hours that they're there and see more people, that it will be an alternative than going to their primary doctor as often. Now, some, the clinic is really set up to deal with when you get a sinus infection or something like that, not, you know, ongoing treatment. And so I don't know how many of those cases will go there, but, you know, it certainly, it doesn't hurt to try.
Well, I guess kind of the way leading into it, I can remember with my kids were young, they went to Haywood Pediatrics, and they went Monday through Friday. But now, there's someone there a large portion of the time, seven days a week. That's kind of what I was wondering, if there was a way to increase that, even if it means hiring a second person, to where they could do weekend stuff, to where, when people are out active, they need stitches, different things like that, if there's a way to increase that and make it more readily available seven days a week? If that would cut our costs down, if there's enough claims that come in, or enough things that have happened after hours that we could absorb and save money, I guess is kind of what I'm looking at. I know you're not in a position to answer that.
No, but that's certainly worth looking at, especially if it costs us a hundred and six dollars a visit and urgent care. And in a case of needing something like that, it's three twenty. It would pay for itself pretty quickly that way, so.
Right, we would have to market it somehow to get people to where they started doing it. So I'm sure it's rehearsed a little while, it would be difficult, but that might be something, I know you're
I agree.
Full of work right now, but how much was urgent care?
The average is three twenty for urgent care.
When I go, if I have to go to the doctor, that's the first place I think it was, the Wellness Clinic. And I guess that's what we need, our employees need to think about that. But maybe it is the time they're not open, you know? Because they're just open a half-day, so that's something to think about. I hadn't thought about that. Anybody have anything else? I do want to thank the staff for Brian and Julie and all the department heads in working on the budget. I know it's always, you got to start in January, and it's like five months, five, six-month process. Then you got six months off. So it seems like you're always doing budget planning.
See you all in November.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. And once again, a budget hearing will be Thursday night, May twenty-third, at five thirty in this room, in the historic courtroom here. So this is a call for that, a public hearing. Okay, we have no appointments or closed session tonight. Does anybody have anything else for our meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, all those in favor say aye. We're adjourned.